I'd like to call to order the regular city council meeting for March 18th, 2020, 6:10 PM. Madam roll call.
Mayor Ronnie Felder.
Here.
Chairperson Kishan Bamilah Anderson.
Present.
Chair Pro Tem Julia Botel.
Here.
Members of the board, Dr. Botel will be attending the meeting tonight due to illness. Councilperson Trodrick McCoy.
Here.
Councilperson Shirley Lanier.
Present.
Councilperson Doug Louis Lawson.
Here.
City manager Jonathan Evans.
Present.
City clerk Claudia Anthony is present. City attorney Don Wayne.
Here.
You may proceed.
All right, we'll have a moment of silence followed by the pledge of allegiance led by Councilman McCoy. Do we have any additions, deletions, or substitutions?
Madam Chair, if I can have the city clerk read off any additions, deletions, and substitutions, and then after she concludes with her remarks, I do have an item I'd like to add on the agenda.
Okay.
Madam Chair, members of the board, you should have an addition, deletion, substitution, and revision sheet that includes a community benefits request numbered 19A for the youth empowerment program in the amount of $2,900 from the office of Councilperson Trodrick McCoy. And a community benefits request 19B is a community benefit for the youth empowerment program in the amount of $1,950 from the office of Mayor Felder. That is all that I have.
Okay.
Madam Chair, in the last couple of days, obviously, we've been challenged with COVID-19. I've asked for our public safety team working with risk management if the board would indulge us for approximately about a 15-minute presentation concerning what we're doing on the life safety side, as well as we have a practicing physician that is here to present some additional information to the board and information that we believe is pertinent to our residents watching at home.
Okay, where do you want to add that, write off the consent?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Madam Chair? Yes. I'd like to pull item number four from the agenda. So Madam Clerk, we're going to make the presentation item 19A.
Oh, Madam Chair, it would be 19C.
I'm sorry, yeah, 19C, all right.
And Madam Chair, if I may, would you like to enter into the record your comments with respect to your community benefits associated?
Yes, hold on one minute. Ms. Lanier, what did you say you wanted to do?
I want to pull item number four from the agenda.
Okay. All right, and you want to go ahead?
Clarification, so Councilwoman, are you asking to delete it or pull it? Because it's on consent, are you looking to delete it?
I'm looking to delete it, I, if I may, Madam Chair.
Oh, right, I'm sorry, we're not at pulling yet, you want to have a discussion on it?
No, no, I want to have it deleted. And if I may, I'll give you a couple of the reasons why.
Okay.
Looking at the board appointments, I have no problem whatsoever with the board appointments. What I do have an issue with is the fact that these are members who've been on the board. There is no term limits for this board, which means that the alternates who are on the board in all likelihood would never become a member based on the fact that members can keep getting reappointed every term. And the purpose of alternates is to, at some point, sometime, be able to serve on the board and have a vote. But the way it stands, there are no term limits for this board.
Okay, so, Mr. Evans, is this something that we can bring back to another meeting so that we could have a conversation about it at another time?
Yes, Madam Chair, we can certainly do that.
Is the board okay with that?
Yes, Madam Chair.
I'm fine with it.
Okay, all right, so we're going to postpone item number four to be discussed at our next meeting, perhaps?
Yes, Madam Chair, we can do that.
All right. And I would like to, as you stated earlier, in light of the COVID-19, with my community benefits, I initially had several applications that were placed some time ago, which I normally give to a lot of the nonprofits, but what I would like to do, and I think it would be very beneficial if we could utilize the monies that I have for this particular set of funds to go into a city fund that will be able to work along with the fire rescue, fire department, and have a COVID-19 initiative which will be rolled out next week. And I will definitely provide that information. As you know, everything is moving pretty quickly, so I felt that it would probably be best served if those funds could be used for our residents for this particular initiative. And I'm hoping that the nonprofits that did submit their applications would be able to partner along with this project that we will have rolling out. But more information will be forthcoming. It will be the total $7,500, and it would go... Mr. Sherman, I don't know if you need to explain how that would be done, but typically it's just an account set up to be utilized for that project, and it will be explained as to how that goes.
Yes, Madam Chair, we can provide a detailed memorandum to the balance of the board as to how the funds will be tracked and monitored and what purposes they would be utilized for. But it would be specifically for, more so, the purchase of commodities and goods and things to assist in the recovery and the response efforts, not for staff, time, or personnel.
Okay, all right, so that would be the full $7,500 of my community benefits for this particular set of funds. So that will be item number 19...
C.
We're going to make that C and then make the presentation D? All right.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
I'd like to add a community benefits request payable to the city of Riviera Beach Parks and Rec Department. I handed out a sheet for all the council to review. It's going to go towards the boys' basketball travel team that I'd like for Parks and Recs that they sponsor. It's for $308. That's just to offset the cost of the program for the kids, for the boys' travel team.
For upcoming or something?
Upcoming.
They're going somewhere?
They're...
They're still going somewhere? Or just when they...
Upcoming, when they actually start back there.
Okay. All right, so 19C is the $7,500 for me for community benefits with the city fund. 19D, Ms. Anthony for Lawson, Parks and Rec, $308. Any other community benefit add-ons? All right, and so 19E would be the presentation. All right, any other additions, deletions, or substitutions?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'm trying to determine whether or not my community benefits that were to be given to Palm Beach Gardens High School will be used at all this year. If the school is not going to use them, I'd like to also shift them for the COVID-19 initiative.
All right, so you...
I have to determine that yet, I haven't gotten back yet from my contact at the high school.
Um, so, Mr. Sherman and Mr. Evans?
Madam Chair, what I would recommend is that the board, in their action, provide... or add an item to the agenda to put a caveat in that in the event that the funds are not utilized by the educational institution, that the monies would be set aside in a fund to address COVID-19 and the city's response. So it gives the legislative authorization by virtue of a vote, and then we can, as staff, follow up and find out specifically what's occurring.
All right, so that's...
Thank you.
Item number 12 for Dr. Botel with Palm Beach Gardens High School. Is that the one you're referring to?
Yes.
Okay.
Madam Chair.
What about your number nine, Suncos Community High School, Dr. Botel?
Uh, let me see, I'm looking at it now. Well, if we put a caveat in that we can change it, then that would take care of everything, I think, right? And I can examine everything.
Okay, so, oh, actually, 11, 12, so do we want to just say anything for the schools for you?
Uh, yeah, I mean, I think Sammy is telling me, my contact is telling me that the class of 2020 can still use the money for things, but I would like to have an opportunity to really consider. I didn't, I wasn't aware of this opportunity to shift to this COVID-19 initiative, and I think that might be something that's more in dire need right now. So I would like to have an opportunity to consider these within the next day or so.
Well, how about maybe if you want to just delete those and just commit those funds to COVID-19, and then you'll get another set of monies that you could utilize in our next meeting and have it go towards the schools, by then you'll know more for sure.
That's true, I will do that then. I'll delete the ones that have to do with the schools, and we can always put them in, and I'll shift that money over to COVID-19.
All right, so that's...
So that would be numbers, let me see here.
Nine? Item nine?
Nine, yes.
Eleven?
Yes.
And twelve?
And twelve, yes.
And so nine is for $500 for Suncos?
Yes.
And Palm Beach Gardens, $2,000?
Yes.
And Palm Beach Gardens, $1,000?
Right, right, and all that can go to COVID-19 for now, and then, as you say, once we get our additional funding, we can put that toward the schools.
All right, so, Ms. Anthony, did you get all of that?
Madam Chair, if I added that correctly, that's a total of $3,500 that would be going to the fire department for the COVID-19 initiative.
Yes, thank you.
We would call it the COVID-19 Fund.
Right, okay. All right, any other additions, deletions, or substitutions?
Madam Chair, before we move forward, that would now become... that community benefit would now become 19E, and the presentation would be 19F.
All right, any disclosures by the board?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Just have a question, actually, in reference to the COVID-19 before we move forward with the funds. Mr. Evans, if the funds that we're actually putting into this COVID-19 fund were created, and being that we're in a state of emergency now, any spending that we spend as a city will be reimbursed to the city after this crisis is completed.
The federal government has provided some general guidelines, but they haven't provided much specificity. There are certain commodities and things that we can purchase that we anticipate will be reimbursable, but at this particular moment, we cannot guarantee that the money that we expend associated with this will come back to the city.
So, Madam Chair, I wanted us to consider possibly creating a fund after this is complete to reimburse the funds that's going, normally would go to the nonprofit organizations, and possibly utilizing this money that's recouped, if it is recouped, to go back towards these nonprofits that have requested money at the time. So if we do recoup some of this money that we're actually taking away from the nonprofits that Waste Management normally gives to us for that, then if we can use that money in the future whenever this is past us.
Well, for my particular, for the initiative that I was thinking of, it was more of... I don't know, are we looking to make one BIC fund? Because I was looking at it like a council initiative-type thing, and that's why I mentioned being able to utilize some of those nonprofits in whatever manner I may be able to use. So essentially, they could still benefit from it and partner with it, so that's where I was going with it.
And the challenge is waiting on the federal government for reimbursement can take years. So in the event that the board did establish this fund, there are some things that we can do to assist the school district because we know that they're going to a digital platform. It looks like they're making steps towards that, so the purchases of computing devices may be something that, as part of that fund, that you collectively, as the board, say that a portion of this will go to our schools to assist in purchasing laptops or, you know, iPads if their school is not already providing that.
Yeah, and I know a lot of the funds from the state are being shifted to be able to allow for the schools to make purchases if they need it. So we want to make sure we verify, you know? We don't want to over saturate one area when they already have enough for that.
Okay, I just want us to also be prepared for some...
Yeah, I definitely kept that in mind for that nonprofit to participate. All right, any, no problem, disclosures by council. All right, maybe we have a motion to adopt the agenda.
So move to second.
Madam Clerk?
Councilperson Lanier.
Yes.
Councilperson McCoy.
Yes.
Councilperson Lawson.
Yes.
Pro Tem Botel.
Yes.
Chair Miller Anderson.
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
Members of the public shall be given a total of three minutes to speak on all items listed on the consent agenda. Any person who would like to speak on consent agenda items, please fill out a public comment card located on the table directly outside of the council chambers and give it to the staff prior to the adoption of the agenda. All matters listed under the consent agenda item are considered to be routine and action will be taken by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a councilperson so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the general order of business and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. Do we have any councilpersons that would like to pull an item from the consent? All right.
The one that I pulled from before?
That was deleted.
Oh, deleted.
I mean, post, it was pulled from, it was deleted and postponed. All right, can we have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
So moved, second.
All right, Madam Clerk, with those modifications that we made with the community benefits, obviously. All right, Madam Clerk?
Councilperson Lanier.
Yes.
Councilperson McCoy.
Yes.
Councilperson Lawson.
Yes.
Pro Tem Botel.
Yes.
Chair Miller Anderson.
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
Any person who would like to speak on an agenda item, please fill out a public comment card located on the table directly outside the council chambers and give it to the staff prior to the item being presented to city council for discussion. Members of the public will be allowed to speak on each regular item, agenda item. In no event will anyone be allowed to submit a comment card and speak on an agenda item after the resolution is read or item considered. Public comments should be restricted to issues, matters, or topics pertinent to the city of Riviera Beach. Please be reminded that the city council has adopted rules of decorum governing public conduct during official meetings, which has been posted at the entrance of the council chambers in an effort to preserve order. If any of the rules are not adhered to, the council chair may have any disruptive speaker or attendee removed from the podium, from the meeting, and/or the building if necessary. Please govern yourselves accordingly. All right, Mr. Evans, so are we going to go into public comment first, or are we going to do the presentation now?
Um, we can go into public comments first, Madam Chair.
All right, so, public comments.
Madam Chair, just so I make sure we're on the same page, that is the public comment section that was due to start at 7:30?
Yes.
Okay, the acceptance of public comment cards will be until 7:30?
Until we finish, if 7:30, if we're still here, I don't even, clock not working. 7:30, we'll cut it off if we're still here, and obviously, if we finish the meeting sooner, it'll be over as soon as we finish the meeting.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
All right.
Lynn Hubbard.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Lynn Hubbard, Riviera Beach. I'm here this evening to ask about the project that is going on or pending on the canal behind our homes on 23rd Street. We wasn't sure when that was going to be on the agenda. We wanted to get an idea about it. We thought that this meeting would be canceled tonight, but since it wasn't, we talked among ourselves last night. So I brought to you a petition signed by the residents that live on 23rd Street that houses above that canal. What we'd like to have is a clear understanding as to when that would actually be on the agenda. We don't want it to pass us by, and we not come here to be able to speak about it. The other residents decided that if this meeting was shown on television, they would have to do that because of the virus, and I would come over and bring you their names and the petition that was signed. So if we could get an idea of when this would be on the agenda, because we don't want it slid through and it happened and it's a foregone conclusion, and we know nothing about it, because for some reason, we thought it was on the agenda tonight. That was the last information that we received. And, but it is not, so we'd just like to get some real clarification as to the council's intent as opposed to sliding it through, letting us know, letting us have some say in this, please. So tonight, I am, I'm here on behalf of the residents. You have, each of you should have, the petition, and we have some concerns about the structure of our homes, the foundation of our homes. All kind of things have been told by the developer that we know aren't true. For years, they have been trying to do that property. So we know for real what's going to happen to, because we have the cat sound heights and the vibration to our homes, and everybody has, all kind of engineers have come out, geologists that have come out under different management. So we know what we can expect, and we don't want you to be bamboozled by the pretty pictures because we know those pictures that they have is not what's going on that property. So we would like to hear from you as to exactly what date will that be on the agenda so all of us can come over.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, that concludes at this time.
All right, Mr. Evans?
Madam Chair, I was not aware of the items being placed on the previous agenda that we had proffered to the council, but we can definitely get back to the resident and find out exactly when it's anticipated to come before you all. But I can tell you, as it relates to that particular project, there's a bunch of other documents that still need to be executed and agreed upon, and legal would have to review some of the elements associated with the conveyance of that ditch and the water that is in there, because that is a piece of infrastructure that we want to be conscientious of before we do any changes. So I think it's pretty far along from getting before you all, nonetheless. I will find out more information and then inform the resident, as well as inform you all, as...
Okay, thank you. All right, so that concludes public comment. Obviously, we'll keep it open and circle back. All right, item number 19F, the presentation?
Madam Chair and members of the city council, obviously, we are tasked with trying to combat COVID-19. This pandemic has changed the way in which we operate, not just here in Riviera Beach, but regionally, statewide, and nationwide. Our public safety staff has done an exceptional job in providing service to our residents, and we want to share with you, from a multifaceted approach, some of the things that are happening in our community. And we also have a physician that has a acute understanding of COVID-19 and some of the things that we need to be conscientious of as a community and as people that are dealing with this particular pandemic. So at this time, if I can have Chief Kurt and his team make the presentation, and then following, immediately after that, it will be our HR director, Ms. Dickerson, and her team that will make a follow-up presentation.
All right.
Good evening, council.
Good evening.
And how do I get this up on the screen there? Beautiful, thank you. Good evening again, council, John Kurt, interim fire chief. I come to you today in a couple of different capacities. As you all are well aware, we have activated our EOC. We are currently at a Level 2 activation, which is a partial activation. This is a very unique circumstance that we're faced with where we kind of have a hybrid system in how we're operating our EOC, meaning that we have our EOC functions as we deal with COVID-19, but once that's done, we go back to our departments and we function as department heads or directors. So I come before you today as the operations section chief within the EOC, and then I'm going to have my staff present the fire element of it. And in this operations section, I'm going to be responsible for fire operations, police operations, and Mr. Blankenship, who's been reassigned to, what we're using the term, as leisure services. So that's going to deal with some of the municipal elements as far as parks and recreation facilities, beachfronts, and the like. So the operational briefing that was provided to staff yesterday has been updated, and currently, right now, Riviera Beach Fire Rescue has run a call on one patient who has been deemed a patient under investigation. Fortunately, with great situational awareness, our crews, upon arriving on the scene and walking into the unit where the patient was located, identified the potential for an exposure, they donned the appropriate PPE, they then treated that patient, transported that patient to the hospital, and subsequently, we were notified by the hospital that that person has now been deemed a person under investigation. That person has been tested, but understanding there's a bottleneck with testing and results coming back, we still have not heard whether or not that person is positive or negative, and considering our personnel were in proper PPE, there was no need to isolate or quarantine those individuals. We've been experiencing some issues with cellular networks. The different platforms, whether it be go-to meeting, whether it be WebEx, everybody's trying to use teleconferencing right now, and it's actually put a stress on the nation's bandwidth. Basically, they refer to times like this of times of hypercommunication, and this is unprecedented. Nobody's ever seen this before. There are multiple platforms that are just shutting down, so it's actually become quite difficult. But we're working through that with IT and our AT&amp;T partners through FirstNet to see if we can overcome some of these challenges. N95 respirators are critically low, and this is not just here in Riviera Beach. This is throughout the county, the state, the nation, and the world. China produces 50% of the world's N95 respirators, and right now, they are holding on to everything that they have. The CDC does have a national stockpile, and they're going to be looking to slow release. And fortunately, we've been able to submit a request to the Palm Beach County Emergency Operations Center to obtain some of these stockpiles that are maintained by the Health Department, the EOCs, and the federal government. Working very closely with Chief Osgood and the Police Department, we've asked officers to refrain from coming in a close proximity with medical patients. We're asking that they stay outside of any call that EMS is running, trying to preserve their safety, and also trying to preserve the PPE. We can't throw it on on every call. Currently, we've looked at what our burn rate is. So we've looked at what we have in stock, what we're using daily, and how long that'll last. Right now, we're at about 10 days, and 10 days, we'll be out of respirators. So we're looking at alternative measures. We do have our SCBA mask, that has been thrown out as an idea. We are waiting to hear back from the federal government on some of these other things. But, you know, in order to prevent the abundance of use of this PPE, we're limiting contact with as many people as we can with suspected patients. PD has implemented some control measures within their departments. They're conducting roll call outside, that seems to be very popular now, using fresh air environments when you do have to bring people together. And also, they've been working very hard over the last couple of days to provide notification to restaurants, bars, and nightclubs of the executive order signed by the governor in regards to closing and capacities. So they've been out there, beating the streets, making sure that they have this information. And as of right now, there's a lot of conversation about if this becomes a problem, where is the authority to enforce? Right now, we're not taking a very heavy-handed approach. We're working with our municipal restaurants, and bars, and nightclubs, and just really asking that they comply. Down the road, if this becomes an issue, we're going to look at alternative measures of enforcement. But right now, we've been very successful on just getting out notification. Fire, basically, what we've done is modified our dispatch protocol again, where we're using one responder to go into the home to make patient contact on any suspected patient that may have coronavirus or COVID-19. This will, again, minimize the amount of PPE that needs to be worn. However, crews will be on the ready with their PPE should the need arise, and we need multiple people to address the patient. We've implemented our rescue truck decontamination protocols, and will be followed after transporting any patient that is suspected of COVID-19. And for that matter, any patient, there's going to be an increased level of decontamination, but more so when it's a patient under investigation or a positive patient. We have extreme decon measures to ensure that those vehicles stay clean. We've submitted the mission resource request to Palm Beach County's EOC for PPE, and we've also visited all ALFs and senior facilities trying to educate their staff and their personnel by giving them... by giving them pamphlets and flyers on what they can do to protect our most at-risk community. Our initiative this week is to get out to all the daycares. We anticipate with the schools being shut down, daycares are gonna be inundated with individuals wanting to drop off their children for daycare services. So, we really want to make sure we get out there to our daycares and have conversations with them on what they can do to make their environment better. Leisure services, Richard Blankenship's looking to acquire portable hand washing stations that you may see popping up at city facilities. We anticipate having ten on Friday. And these are basically what you see at outdoor events where it has the foot pump, where you can wash your hands, soap and water. We have a strike team that's going to be filling those and draining those. But, you're gonna see them at the entrance to City Hall, you're gonna see them at the entrance to Public Works facilities, front and back. And anywhere where people tend to come in from the public, we're gonna have those available to them so they can wash their hands before coming into the facility. We are establishing strike teams. Originally, we were looking to maintain all public restrooms open at parks and the beaches. We've had individuals call out sick, there are individuals that are not feeling well. So, we really had to consider an alternative approach. And basically, our main goal right now is to keep beach bathroom facilities open for now and cleaned on a regular basis. And when I say regular, we're talking a half an hour to one hour cleanings ongoing throughout the day because we have noticed a high concentration of people visiting our beaches. This is where the conversations with Mr. Evans has become important because we're noticing what's called the funneling effect. As other municipalities shut down their beaches, who's open? Riviera Beach is open, so everybody's funneling in here. Which, right now, it's not a problem, but it's something we want to keep an eye on, that's a concern. And most importantly, I wanted to update on our, excuse me, on our senior center over at the Lindsay Davis Center. We have closed down the senior center because of the amount of people coming into close contact, most vulnerable population. But, we did get information from the Palm Beach County Division of Senior Services. While they will be discontinuing service of their usual congregate meals on Thursday, on Friday, they are gonna allow for food pickup, two weeks' worth of rations that the seniors can pick up and bring home with them so they have food for the next two weeks. Mr. Blankenship and his team are reaching out to all of our seniors that normally participate in the meal program, determine whether or not they have the ability to go pick it up at one of the distribution sites. If not, we're putting a plan together to go pick up that food and make sure we deliver it to their homes. And then, they're looking to release additional food on April 3rd. So, every two weeks, they're gonna be looking to distribute these foods. With that, I'd like to turn it over to our EMS Chief, Chief McCarthy. And I'd like to also introduce Captain Mark Johnson, he's running our logistics, and Assistant Chief Golden, who is managing fire in my absence as I'm working with the EOC.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Tom McCarthy, you're Division Chief of Emergency Medical Service.
Walter, I'd like to call to order the Riviera Beach CRE, regular meeting, March 11th, 6:16 PM. Madam Roll Call?
Commissioner Lawson?
Here.
Commissioner?
For the purpose of the COVID or am I good to go and warm it up a little bit?
We can use that excuse, but I don't think that's the reason.
Okay, I don't think so either, so we're gonna fix that a little bit over there. All right, thank you, go ahead.
Not a problem. So, what you're gonna see in this protocol is gonna be what we call the three leveled option. The first option is gonna be if we have to encounter the patient, perform the full assessment, treatment and transport to a medical facility. The second one you're gonna see is gonna be dealing with having that patient that gets treated in place not to be transported to a hospital. The reason for that is because if the patient is what we deem to be stable enough to stay at home to prevent surge capacity problems at the hospitals, then we would do that and we provide for a follow-up with those patients on a rotating basis. Okay, the first slide here is what we call a heat map. So, this heat map shows us the state of Florida. And we pared this one down from the national map and actually the international map, which is no longer germane to us because of what we have going on here in the state. So, just some statistics up there in the top, Palm Beach County, Florida, there were nineteen total cases, eighteen of them are residents, we have one that came in from somewhere else, fourteen of them are men and five of them are women. So, what we're gonna do now is as we get this data coming back from the CDC, as we get the data coming back from the health departments, we'll be able to know whether or not they've converted or they've healed themselves because they are part of their surveillance profiles that the health department stays on top of. So, what you're gonna see now is what a protocol looks like. And it talks about how we're gonna manage these patients, like I said earlier, and how we're gonna deal with them. But, it also puts specific provisos in there regarding how we will manage the call on scene and what we're gonna do as far as our protection goes that Chief Kurt alluded to. Now, we talked about, you know, the possibilities that citizens are gonna see a little bit different from our standard normal practice. One of the things that citizens are likely to see is going to be, we will manage these calls much like you see a structured fire, where we get on scene and we're putting our gear on and going in. Well, you may see an evolution to that type of a process where as we arrive on scene, we're putting our gear on and either the battalion chief or the captain on scene will make sure that our people are putting their gear on in the right fashion. And he's also going, he or she is also going to determine the number of people who will enter into the facility. So, these are some of the hallmarks that we're looking for when we're talking about assessing these patients to decide whether or not we're going to declare what's called a met alert to the hospital. And all that simply does, that alerts the hospital to the fact that we're gonna be bringing them a patient that is a potential patient that could potentially be under investigation for COVID. So, now here's another second level, what you see on the hierarchy of the patients that we are gonna be doing these treatments and transports for. And again, it provides guidance as far as what we do in the back of the truck, it provides guidance as far as what we're gonna do with our personal protective equipment. And also too, something else that's gonna be a little bit of divergence from a normal practice. And that is here in town, we have allowed people to ride into the hospital, it's family members and such. That's gonna be, that's a non-negotiable, we can't do that. We cannot risk the exposure. So, you'll see the bottom point there that emphasizes that. Now, this gives us a little bit more of a guidance when it comes to non-transport recommendations where you see the patient's age now becomes part of the consideration, the vital signs become part of the considerations. And on this one, you say, okay, well, now we're looking at the go, no-go. Then, we're gonna go ahead and we're gonna follow up now then for what we call the exclusion criteria. Because remember, these are still EMS patients. We're gonna talk about, you know, do they have chest pain, do they have shortness of breath, are they having, you know, fainting episodes? And by the way, chairperson, thanks for that covering of the talk. Well done, well done.
I've been having practice.
So, this next slide, you're gonna see where we have whether or not, when they meet that non-transport criteria, you see, we now bulleted down there one through six. And that's because that is a specific flow recommendation that we do then provide to the patient that we've had that contact with. And the medical director, Dr. Seaval, made it very important because of, now, you're gonna see these step-down type of scenarios happen. Where we go, we see, we recommend to go see a physician. We go, we see them, we recommend them to go to an urgent care center or through a drive-through testing center. I can tell you right now, the system for the drive-through testing centers is nowhere near as robust as it needs to be, for us to be a hard-died-in-the-wall type of a practice. But nonetheless, that is something that's gonna be a consideration for the patient once this evolves out. So, this page here is gonna tell us what we're gonna do once they finish the non-transport recommendation. And you see where we've italicized those bottom lines. Now, this protocol you're looking at is a protocol that our personnel have in hand as well. So, they're giving this real-time guidance. Be warned though, if you think about how this thing has evolved, there's been a lot of adjustments along the way. What you're seeing as a protocol today could very well be a totally different protocol by 10:00 AM tomorrow. And the last has to do with what we call the patient-hospital evaluation form. We don't just leave the patient in lurch without any type of education or guidance. So, what you see here now is the educational direction. You've got some guidance here that's bullet pointed here in the boxes. And also too, we do some maintenance here too. And it tells us, it tells the patient how we're gonna be doing follow-ups with them later on. Now, some of this data we share across the EMS chief community here in the county, where we have eleven provider agencies. And the reason this form is so important is to show you how important it is that we are doing this across the county. So, the level search you get here in Riviera Beach is gonna be the same level search again to get in Palm Beach County, Delray Beach, or as you see down there, Boca Raton. And again, this is part of that data sharing that's important to us. That way, we make sure we pool this as a team effort. And, you know, they're not just, the citizens of Riviera Beach aren't just getting our expertise, they're also getting input from other agencies. And again, we're sharing intel with them as well for some of our best practices. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, at this particular moment, I'd ask that our Human Resources Director, Ms. Rosalyn Dickerson.
Thank you all so much.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Will we have an opportunity to have questions of the chief?
Yeah, if you want to do it now?
Just a quick one, I know you mentioned, chief, that the, we don't have really much teeth in terms of managing the capacity of bars and restaurants, particularly on Singer Island. I've had complaints from some of my constituents that they're packed in the evening and that people are not really abiding by that 50% capacity rule. So, I'm just wondering, what can we do?
We've actually been working very closely with legal. And there's gonna be some guidance and with the police department as well. And there's gonna be some guidance that's going to be put out where there are complaint forms that can be filed. It's the Center for Business and Professional Development.
DBPR.
DBPR. Who's actually the enforcement agency, but we do understand that they don't obviously have the ability to enforce this. So, we're gonna be working very closely with legal. If some of these start to become a nuisance or a problem, we may look at other alternatives. But, I can assure you that there'll be guidance out by the end of the week that'll be available to the public where if some of these issues are becoming a nuisance, we can look at what are our mechanisms for filing these complaint forms that have been made available.
And Madam Chair?
Thank you very much.
If I may also, the distinction between nightclubs and bars and restaurants is profoundly different. Nightclubs and bars have been by executive order asked to be closed for thirty days. Restaurants are asked to reduce their seating capacity by 50% and practice social distancing. We have and law enforcement has interacted with the businesses in our community. I think the activities and festivities that occurred yesterday was probably predicated on St. Patrick's Day. And they were their last hurrah or what have you. But, we are going to make sure that we continue to inform them that this is an executive order and that we need to have compliance. But, we're trying to do it in a way that's understanding and compassionate because these businesses conceivably could be out of business in the next sixty to ninety days if this continues on. So, we're being mindful and trying to work with them and understanding that we don't want to see a situation where this pandemic continues to spread. So, we're working on communication tools and talking with the owners to voluntary comply with the executive order.
Thank you very much.
And if I can add, earlier today, maybe an hour or so ago, the Florida League of Cities issued a clarification on the governor's executive order. And it does not require the total closure of bars and nightclubs for thirty days. There are just some restrictions placed on them. And so, we're continuing to look into that to see exactly what it means.
Okay, thank you. All right, HR?
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm trying to reserve some of my time so that I can yield at the end, so I'll move rather quickly. I want to share with you some of the actions Human Resources has taken to ensure a safe and healthy workplace. It has not been in isolation, it's been in support and partnership with other departments in the city, primarily the city administration office, legal, procurement, public works and of course, the entire executive team in their respective departments. So, I want to share with you, not on this slide, I'm preparing for the specialist to come forward. I want to share that we've been preparing policy and procedures in conjunction with our legal team, getting feedback across the organization to move as expeditiously as possible to align policies and practices that are consistent with, you know, the pandemic. We, as a department, have been busy answering questions and concerns and also giving guidance on case-by-case scenarios, using guidance from EOC, some of our compliance guidelines with some of the labor and employment laws as well as, let's see, I mentioned EOC, the CDC and some of the other authorities out there during this time. We've been working hard to determine how to support the continuity of operations, being disciplined, agile and looking to make continuous improvement pretty much on the fly very abruptly. Under the authority of the city manager, we are waiving waiting periods for new employees and also making health and medical benefits available to full-time and part-time employees to ensure that they do not have a lapse of coverage during this time where medical needs may be extremely high at some point, if not now. Risk has worked expeditiously with facilities management and public works, also procurement to secure supplies in a very strained supply chain. We have called all across the country and I do believe we owe kudos to everyone who's been involved to ensure that we have adequate inventory of supplies to clean our common areas and also the offices. We are working on other workplace particulars in partnership with, you know, numerous departments. We've developed employee and workplace communications, trying to ensure that we keep a calm across the organization. Sometimes, absence of information can create a little bit more anxiety in these tense times. But, just trying to ensure that we're working diligently as a city departments and just partners to ensure safety for our employees and for our residents. Through our insurance partner, Aetna, employees have access to Teladoc, which is really remote doctor access through video conferencing. They're able to provide through observation, actually into a home, looking at family members and make medical decisions based on visual cues and asking medical questions for screening. And they can also write prescriptions that will kind of decrease and help support the healthcare facilities and not strain resources for extremely sick individuals. In addition to that, you know, through our partner, Aetna, COVID-19 testings and related services can be received with a zero-dollar copay. So, we think that's a huge achievement in partnership with Aetna to ensure that our employees have peace of mind in securing services, not worrying about copay and during this time, just kind of reserving resources. Other information and guidance has been shared from experts at CDC and Florida Department of Health. Moving a little bit more quickly, we are working to determine telecommuting and alternative work arrangements for employees as applicable. You know, we'll be identifying the positions rather quickly and giving guidance and guidelines for how those work arrangements would take place to the benefit and the interest, in the best interest of the city in ensuring continuity of government services where remote access would be applicable. Of course, we're gonna be looking at essential versus non-essential tasks. Distributing flyers for prevention and safety education has been a focus the last several, seven to ten days. We're in partnership with the media team and want to give kudos to them. We're ensuring educational postings are also in the common areas for our citizens who may come on site. We are planning and will be delivering as of tomorrow, training to staff who will actually clean the facilities at a level that is necessary during a pandemic to keep down the spread of germs and diseases. We'll be doing training on chemicals and things of that nature and proper cleaning techniques. So, kudos to the safety team and risk management overall. We'll also be assessing alternative work arrangements. There are some things that are in the works now, we'll be communicating that. Without going into much detail, I'll just share, we're also going to be looking at, because at some point, if individuals go out, they have to return. So, we'll be looking at safety guidelines and giving guidance on the protocol for how that will be done as well and ensuring that individuals are returning with medical, you know, approval to re-enter the workforce. So, at this time, I think the best thing that I can do is introduce our esteemed guest, who is actually as a public service, coming here, no cost to the city. He is an expert and I'll share a little bit about his background. He's the founder, CEO and president of triple O Medical Services and triple O Research Institute. I wanted to shorten this, but I decided to share all the information because I think it will bring credence and credibility to what he'll share with you. In May 1985, he graduated with a bachelor of science degree in both chemistry and mathematics from Jacksonville State University and Jacksonville, Alabama. Alabama. He served three years in the U.S. Army where he worked on the development of vaccines against diseases. Upon completing his military tour, he attended medical school at the University of Maryland Baltimore. He then did three years of residency training in internal medicine and two years of fellowship training in infectious disease at the University of Miami and Jackson Memorial Hospital in Miami, Florida. He spent one year performing infectious disease consultations at the Cleveland Clinic in Fort Lauderdale. Our doctor moved to West Palm Beach, Florida in 2000.
Madam Chair, I'm sorry. We have a few other things on the agenda, so if I can interrupt Madam Chair and ask that we bring the speaker on up?
I'm okay with hearing it. I mean, we do have a couple of things, but I think it, I'm okay with hearing out the rest of it. What about the rest of you? Okay. Mr. Lawson?
We can bring the speaker up.
All right. Thank you so much, Mr.
I'd like to introduce Dr. Oshiyemi.
Thank you.
Oshiyemi.
Madam Chair, we know Dr. Oshiyemi. That's why we said we don't need to hear.
Well, I don't know him, so, I mean, and the public may not know him, so, I mean, we gotta.
I don't know him.
Exactly. So we want to make sure that everyone has an opportunity to know him the way that you all know him.
And the reason why I said that, because she would be reading for the next 20 minutes based on his accolades.
I mean, I'm sure she wouldn't have taken 20 minutes to do it, but, you know, I do want to make sure that everyone is aware, just as you all are comfortable and aware of who he is, that everyone else needs to be on the same, same platform as that. And I did meet him too. I mean, I met him once when I went to his new grand opening, but I, it's okay. We're good. Thank you so much. Go ahead.
Thank you so much for having me tonight. I'm not going to take too much of your time. I'm just going to try to give you as much information from my perspective, just to give you some background of COVID-19 and what we're doing in healthcare to make this better. So to give you some background, COVID, coronavirus, COVID-19, is a form of coronavirus, and there are several types. There are actually four different subgroups, and most of them tend to affect animals, not humans. But there are seven different coronaviruses that can affect humans. The first one was identified in 1960. And as of today, there are about seven different types that we know affect humans. And the last three is what caused some epidemic or pandemic in the last few years. The MERS, which had about 36% mortality rate, SARS, which had about 10%, 9.6% mortality rate, and now SARS-CoV-2, which is the COVID-19. So SARS, which happened in 2003, spread to about more than 24 countries. Like I mentioned before, the mortality rate was about 9.6%. MERS, on the other hand, started in Saudi Arabia in 2012. Again, same kind of spread, person to person, but mortality rate was very high, 35%. And if you were sick enough to be in the ICU and were intubated, your mortality rate was as high as 60% to 70%. So now, in 2019, we have a new coronavirus, which we've never seen before. Therefore, the community has no antibodies. So, you know, when you get it, you get sick because there's no way to protect yourself. So it's a novel virus that was first described in China, as everybody knows. Initially, when the Chinese looked at about 72,000 cases they had, the mortality rate was about 2.3%. That number has gone a little bit when we started looking at data that's come out of other countries as we begin to test more. Majority of people get this illness, however, have mild illness. So what we do know from the experience of the Chinese is that it affects everybody. Anyone can get infected from coronavirus. And but of those people get infected, the same population get very sick, and the people that get very sick are the elderly patients. So if you look at their data, if you're between the age of, if you're at least 80 years of age, there's 14.8% chance of dying from that disease, whereas overall rate of dying is 2.3. So if you're between the age of 70 and 90, your mortality rate is about 8%. And if you're so sick to get in the ICU and get intubated, your risk of dying is about 50%. So that's what we do know from their experience. So we're trying to use our experience to what we have now to prepare. Of those patients who are very sick, apart from age, being an elderly person, if you have chronic illnesses such as diabetes that's not controlled, heart failure, cancer, liver disease, renal disease, you're also at risk of having severe illness. It does seem to make children that are sick as influenza. We don't have much information on pregnant women, but influenza can make pregnant women very sick. And our experience, as of yesterday, in U.S., we have about 4,226 cases. So incubation period is about two to 14 days, but most people would get sick in about five days. The difference between MERS and SARS, COVID-19, is that COVID-19, when you get infection, the virus multiplies so quickly that within five days, the amount of virus you have in your upper airway is about 1,000 the amount you get with MERS. So that's why it's more contagious. MERS take about 10 days to get to the high level, but doesn't get as high as COVID-2, COVID-19. So when you look at the infection rate, in Germany, they look at nine patients, for example, and they really follow them, and they realize that, again, the value peaks at the five. And that's why they're more contagious. So if someone's speaking to you, they can actually spread the virus if you're so close to them. That's why the social distance is so important. And after someone, after the symptoms are resolved, people can see actually have the virus in the airway, in the nasopharyngeal airway, or the auriculosa. So if you, if you thought, oh, I have no more fever, I feel good, if we swab you five days later, we can see, find the virus. And up to 10 days, I mean, 12 days in some of those cases. So the main manifestation is really patient complaining of cough, fever, dyspnea, miniaturism, shortness of breath. But this is the same symptoms of what we have with influenza and most of these viral illnesses. And this is the season of where we have flu, so it's very difficult for a patient to determine, or even for a doctor to determine, do you have a flu or do you have COVID-19? So it's very important to, for people who may have any of these symptoms, to call their healthcare providers, not to rush to the emergency room, but to call their doctors to get some kind of guidance. And I'll tell you why in a second. We know this is transmitted by coughing or by contact. So the best way to prevent that is by dropping, meaning that if somebody coughs, it's going to go, if you're at least six feet away, one or six feet away, you are out of that zone. That's why the social distancing is being talked about a lot. So if you're about seven, I see you're at least 6.1 feet away, so you're good. So if you can do that, you'll be good. And also contact. So if I had to cough on the table here, and then I'm putting virus on the table, so this is where we always have the queen's offices of their surroundings, and quarantine. So if you feel sick, most people, like we mentioned before, are going to have mild illness. So if you have fever, cough, you don't feel that bad, call your doctor. Most likely, they will have you stay at home, drink some water, and not go to publics while you, you know, and spreading the viruses, or trying to go get toilet paper at Sam's Club, which is very interesting. People trying to get, you know, toilet paper, and there are tons of people fighting each other. This is not social distancing.
So you're saying just stay at home and drink water?
Stay at home, call your doctor. They will give you instructions. As if you need Tylenol, they can, you know, tell you to take Tylenol, or Motrin, or whatever. If you need Tylenol flu, they'll call something in for you. We don't want you to go to the, you know, walking around exposing yourself. So, you know, telemedicine is something we do now, so we can actually talk to the patient by the phone and guide them as to what to do. And even within their home, it's always important to isolate yourself in your home. So if you have family members, if somebody is sick, it's good to have a separate room for them, so the rest of the family is not sick. So we're working on vaccine, which may take up to a year, so that may not be very helpful in this current, with this current condition. So this is one of the questions people ask, which really, at the end of the day, doesn't really matter. I think what matters the most is social distancing, washing your hands, and if you're sick, you know, young folks, because they think they don't get that ill, they think, ah, I don't care, I don't want to listen to what the government is telling me to stay home, they want to go out. The problem is, you know, even that person's not going to get very ill, they have family members that are older, that may be at risk, or family members that have chronic illnesses that may put them at risk. So if you're a young person, I say still stay home because we don't want to infect other folks. So there are several, you know, the issue we've had so far is testing, and we didn't really have enough testing for a while. There, we still don't have enough, but it's getting better. Initially, CDC was the only one that was able to test through the health departments, but now you have NIH developing their own test. Quest now, lab has the testing. Lab, of course, also, they also have their testing, but those tests have to go through the physician offices. The hospitals also have, they also have their own test, but again, these are in short supply, again, more and more coming in. There are vaccines being worked on because you can have your vaccine against this virus, we can protect it in the future. These are just one of the vaccines. Just to mention, you know, because of this pandemic, people sometimes forget that we've done so much in the healthcare field. When we have SARS, it took about 20 months before we actually sequenced the virus and then decide, get to a point where we actually, you know, inject the first vaccine to the patient and say, okay, let's see if this works. It took 20 months to do that. With coronavirus 2019, it took two months. They sequenced the virus so quickly, within two weeks, they sequenced it, within 24 hours, they had the first test. So the technology we have now to develop vaccine or sequence viruses, you know, it makes it so efficient that for the future, we can truly, you know, get things under control. So it's very amazing. Treatment, we have treatment for influenza. We don't have treatment for coronavirus. Well, there are potential medications that we can use to treat patients who have severe illness, one of which is called remdesivir by Gilead. The study is already ongoing. There's also some of the protest inhibitors we use for HIV. The Chinese have used that in China for the previous coronavirus, so this has been looked at. So there are several different things that have been looked at in terms of treatment. In terms of what we do now, you know, I want to take this opportunity to really tell the public that when you have this illness, don't rush to the emergency room. The hospital is really so busy right now. You know, I get phone calls every five minutes because people are so worried, do they have this, do they have that? So everyone that comes with fever, cough, we have to worry about COVID-19, which is appropriate, but some people don't have anything, they just come and they have a cough, they have no fever, nothing else, they go to the emergency room because they, ah, I mean, I have COVID-19. Sometimes they don't have anything at all when they show up. So we don't want to fill the emergency room with people who don't really need to be there, because people who need to be there don't get the opportunity to get them very quickly. So we don't minimize our exposure. So again, as you all know, N95 and face masks are the things we use for the first responders. They're in the front line, and they've got to protect themselves because they don't know what they're coming up to. There's several protocols put in place for that. So I'm skip that. So committee recommendation. So I mentioned before, if you, you know, at home, make sure if you have high blood pressure, if you have diabetes, make sure you have enough medication for a couple of weeks, because if you fall sick and you don't have a means to go get your medication, check with your pharmacy if they can deliver your medication. So if at least call from home, they can deliver it to you. If you feel sick, stay home, if you know, call your doctor from home. Wash your hands. Everybody's trying to buy sanitizer. Soap and water is great. If you can get soap and water, it will remove all the bacteria virus of your hand. If you haven't had your influenza vaccine, get one, because imagine, you know, we have a vaccine for influenza, we have a treatment for influenza. You know, get that, at least remove that from the equation. So if when you do get sick, we at least know you're less likely to get influenza. If you haven't had your pneumonia vaccine, get that if you're in the appropriate age. Call your doctor to find out if that's the case. Again, always call ahead. Don't just show up in people's offices when you're sick, call them so they can prepare. We don't want our healthcare providers to be sick. If they are sick, they're out, they can't take our patients. The employers have to deal with employees not coming to work if they are sick. So this puts a lot of strain on everyone, including the government. Social media has been a bad thing for people because there's so much, so many misinformation on social media, and people are sharing this misinformation, and it's causing more anxiety in people. Anxiety and stress is picked. I mean, it's really amazing how much anxiety is out there right now. People are worried, people are scared, people are, you know, having panic attack, you know, what's going to happen to me, am I going to die, you know, am I going to get paid to get my medication, how about, you know, am I going to be able to make money to pay my bills because I can't go to work? And, you know, in the government officials like yourself, you hear phone calls every day, people calling and, you know, panicking, family members are calling you, responders have to, they have, you know, they have to worry about going home safely and going to work. And people are quarantined also, you know, anxious, they're home, they feel trapped. And for us, you know, is, for my, for me, I get phone calls from the hospital, from friends, from patients, from everybody in town. So this is the time where we need to be conscious of, you know, of distress and manage as best, and talk to each other about how to make light of some of the issues. Otherwise, we get burnt out. Thank you. Any questions?
I just had a comment. Do you know why, why they're not really putting much emphasis on how many people are recovering and kind of minimizing the hype of it in terms of people dying? Because I think that's what's adding to the anxiety. People are just hearing about the people that are dying and, you know, they're not hearing that a large number have had it, but they're recovering or they had mild symptoms.
That's true. I think, you know, we try to pass that message out as much as we can, but the news media, sometimes when we, when we project this information on your screen, and 50 people died today, you know, people tend to gravitate towards that image, and they forget the larger number here that did well. And that's a constant struggle to try to, you know, reinforce that data.
All right, anyone else?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Doctor, thank you so much. The updates for the residents is something that they've been looking for, and I agree with you, the anxiety that the residents are feeling is the number one issue that we're hearing and we're seeing. So just the facts and actually what to expect is the most important thing for them. So thank you so much.
Thank you for having me.
Madam Chair, also, thank you, Doc. Question, does the fever and the cough go together?
Yes. What you may see in, patients may have cough initially, then within maybe a day later, they will have fever, or they may have fever and cough at the same time.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I just had a question about the beach.
She's on the phone, I'm sorry. She's on the phone. He's looking for you.
Okay, so I saw a piece on CNN today about one of the Florida beaches being so crowded, and I wondered if, I mean, I know we want to keep our beach open so that people have a place to go out of doors. I wondered if we should be cautioning people who are using our beaches to stay separated, and is there any fear of transmission while they're in the water, or how does that, how does that work?
That's a great question. I think some folks down south, South Florida have already closed the beach because of that. This is the spring break, you have all these college students down here now, and they don't really think they're at high risk, so everybody's hanging out. So it's not really the beach, it's the fact that people are there in large numbers. So people are now beginning to say, well, we don't want these people out here because the more crowded you have, the more likely it'll spread there. So, you know, not having people in large number out there is the best thing to do.
Anyone else?
No, I'd just like to thank you for this information. Thank you so much, Dr. Oshiyemi.
Mr. McGlynn?
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. All right. So everybody's concerned about me up here. I don't know. I mean, I would pray that I'm not. I, you know, they won't test me, so I don't know, but we're going to say we're all in it together, right?
What?
We're all together, right? We're a family, so we're good. No, I pray that I'm good, but.
So Mr. Evans, this is the day you choose to put me over here, huh? Thank you. Continuity of government.
We're all one team.
There was a show designated Survivor, right?
All right, item number 20.
Arena Phase Two Development Update Request for Council Direction. Madam Chair, we do not have any public comment cards on this item. The acceptance of public comment cards is now closed.
All right.
All right, Mr. Evans?
Madam Chair, members of the board, if I can have Scott Evans, the CRA Director, appear with me. Uh, city staff would like to proceed forward with selecting a financial consultant to assist us in reviewing the financial documents and the financial acumen and the ability for the entities to proceed forward with the development of Marina Phase Two. We have proffered two solutions to the board to consider. Right now, we do have a contractual agreement with PFM that allows for us to move a lot quicker to be able to bring you a final report and items for consideration. We can anticipate that process being concluded by May twenty-seventh or June third, but the final report could be provided to staff as early as May. If we are to move forward with a new competitive solicitation process for a financial advisor, it looks to take us out for the final report July third and then council review and consideration July fifteenth. The premise behind us securing financial experts to assist us with this is that in conversations that we've had with multiple entities throughout the state of Florida as well as the nation, they have emphasized the importance of having professional experts onboard to assist in facilitating the arrangement because it is such a substantive arrangement. In discussions with the CRA, we did want to bring both options before the council to seek direction because whomever is selected, we wanted the board to be comfortable with what the end product is. And we know that time is of the essence, but we want direction as to how the board wishes to proceed. We have, as a joint team, have worked through, uh, the elements associated with what proposals or what the RFP would look like. So if the board wants to go through a competitive solicitation with a new RFP, we have that. That is really at the final stages of the drafting process. Or we can have a situation where we can bring in our financial consultants, PFM, who have extensive experience in P three arrangements and the RFQ that was submitted some time ago to look for financial consultants to assist the city of Riviera Beach. That was one of the major components that was asked for. So staff is asking for direction from the board as to how you would like to proceed. And then we can move forward in whichever direction the board wants to, to move in. Mr. Evans, do you have any other additional comments?
Madam Chair.
Hold on one second. Did you have anything to add, Mr. Evans?
No, I think that covers the topic.
All right. Dr. Voltell?
Yes, um, in, in my previous life, managing a hundred and forty million dollar budget for a large organization, PFM was extremely helpful and competent, proficient in dealing with the matters that I had and they were very, very complex matters. I think that it would behoove us to take a good look at using them because they know the city, they know, you know, they know our issues and it would speed the process along. So I for one am very much in support of using PFM and not pursuing another entity.
All right, anyone else?
Uh, Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Um, I would have to agree. I think that the board, um, has had some, um, heartburn in terms of how slow the process has been moving, uh, with this project. And if we already have someone who's, um, contracted with us to do it and it would be in a short amount of time, then I think we should take that option given, uh, because doing an RFP would push this out two or three more months.
All right, anyone else?
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Mr. Evans, Mr. Jonathan Evans, so I'm clear. I wanted to know the scope. You kind of spoke briefly about it and I know I heard you say assess developers' financial capability. Then you also mentioned, um, we need a team of financial experts. What, I, I guess, where, where is it at in the RFP process?
Uh, i- if we would, um, provide, if we would go with the vendor that is already onboard, we would provide them a couple of things that we would like for them to look at. For instance, evaluate the financial capabilities of the joint venture development entity to include financial capa- capabilities. From each co-developer, evaluate the sufficient terms and conditions set forth in the proposed partner and reference the proposal. And then provide future financial advisory services as requested by the city and CRA, which is mutually agreed upon. So that is, uh, some of the elements associated with what we would have them look at. However, as we develop the scope of work, that's something that if the board says we're okay with PFM and you all as the board have specific elements that you would like to see incorporated in the overall scope, it is not a Herculean task for myself and Mr. Evans to put a document as what we believe the proposed scope should consider and then the board decide to add, delete and modify. And then that becomes the scope and we hand it off to PFM. So it really, if we go with the firm that we have on contract, we have a lot more latitude to have the board provide some additional information as it relates to what would you like to see accomplished as part of the scope? If we go through a competitive process, then we're going to try to be able to glean as much information from the board and then staff and put together this, um, pretty lengthy document. But if there are certain elements that the board wishes to see incorporated in that, that's very easy for the board to either submit questions to administration or for us to have a meeting where we go over specifically the scope. And then we take that scope and hand it off to PFM to move forward with the, uh, criteria, uh, the evaluation. You as the board can be as involved or as, um, as intimately engaged in the process as you wish.
Follow up. So I'm just, um, curious because I know, I believe it was the workshop that was held over at the Ambassador Center. One of the comments was that it was going to be somebody that was completely, um, I guess, acquired subsequent to the naming of the developer that had independence and not currently someone that was, um, already doing business with the city. So did we go past that option?
Well, i- in the spirit of some of the conversations that I've been able to watch and, and my conversations with Mr. Evans is that there's a desire to actively move forward with this process as quickly as possible. And we have a contract with an existing provider that if you were to go through a competitive solicitation process, they probably would be a top-ranked firm because they do specialize in that particular skillset. So with the boards, uh, to, to try to encapsulate the board's vision with respect to this, we said that the financial advisor that we do have onboard, PFM, the firm, um, will provide expertise to assist in that and that will shorten the timeframe exponentially to be able to provide you all decision points to where you can make a decision as to how you wish to move forward. So they still, they have an existing contract because they went through a competitive solicitation process with the city of Riviera Beach. So they are in our bank as continuing services. But the other side of it is we're, we're probably going to engage a different part of their team to assist us than what we utilize them for financial, um, support on the bond market, et cetera. So there's, there's different skillset. It's a large firm, so they have different, different expertise. So the individuals that most likely would be involved may be folks that have never done any particular work for us. It may be another branch and another team from PFM.
Thank you.
All right, anyone else?
I would just add that, um, there would be some provision in terms of conflict of interest, conflict of interest for the firm for any past or, uh, present involvement with past or future or current developers.
We can do, and, and, and we can get with the city attorney, there's like a conflict check that we can have them do to ensure that there is no previous arrangements um, before we then go forward with engaging them, um, as the firm to look at this particular arrangement. Is it, does the board wish to proceed forward with seeing what the proposed scope of work would be prior to us handing it off to PFM? Because we can draft something in greater detail and the board can take a look at it and, and at your next meeting, provide us some direction as, yes, this is fine, let's go ahead. Because at the end of the day, we want to make sure you all get the information that you're looking for. We don't want the consultant to provide a report that misses the mark. We want to make sure every question and every concern you have is addressed because this is a relationship that has to work.
I, I would, I would like that for it to come before us. Anybody else?
Ma- ma- Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Not if it, not if it delays the process to any great degree. I mean, I, I would, I trust that PFM, they're, they're a huge organization. I'm sure they have people who have a, a variety of skills that could meet our needs. And I, I for one trust our management to craft whatever, um, you know, scope, scope of work and, and then, and then provide it to us. But I, I don't think it would make a difference whether the scope of work is provided, uh, in, in several weeks or, you know, ultimately when we engage PFM at that point, then we can have input. I, I would like to move forward, in other words, I would like to move forward and engage PFM.
Mr. McCoy, were you going to say something?
Yes, I'm, uh, okay, so, uh, I'm sorry, Mr. Jonathan Evans, and I just want to make sure that I'm clear. So you, you referred to the financial experts as providing information on bonding. So is that separate and independent from the stage of seeking out, um, whether a firm is financially capable?
I- in most cases, it would be a different subset of that firm. It would not be the same individuals. And we can do a conflict check to make sure and make, and create that separation if in fact there's somebody that's done work for the city on another side to be completely independent and a new team to look at this particular arrangement. We can set that up and structure that, um, if the board does seem fit. But we will make sure that if there is any, uh, cross, um, utilization of any personnel, that we're aware of that before we enter into that arrangement.
Follow up.
Go ahead.
Mr. Evans, will they also be, I guess, will they also have an arm in the negotiation process?
The, the negotiation process, I think they provide us all the information. And then from the city's standpoint, I think that's where legal and legal experts would assist us in making that contractual arrangement work. So I think they provide us all the information and documentation because in all the information that we've been able to glean from conferences and discussions is you need a financial expert and then you need a legal expert that will look at the arrangement. So I don't think that they would be the ones negotiating the, the terms and conditions. That would be something that will fall under the purview of the attorney's office and their expertise. Now, they will be providing them information, but I believe the negotiations will probably be between, um, the appropriate councils.
And I didn't see this, I think the earliest I seen was two thousand and eighteen. Was there some time before that we used PFM prior to that?
Um, I would have to defer to Mr. Sherman as far as the times that we have utilized PFM.
Randy Sherman, Finance Director. This is the second financial advisor contract that we have had with them. Um, and then I believe when the utility district went off and became a special district, I believe they were the FA for the city back then. But that's the timeframe. So they, not the same individuals, obviously, but the firm has, has served the city for probably close to over two decade period.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
So I like, you would like to see the scope. You know, if we're going to go with PFM, I think certainly what we are already doing, in my opinion, is foregoing the RFP process to kind of streamline it and for the sake of, um, time. I mean, I think they have some, um, obviously they have some extensive experience in this. However, I definitely want to know what exactly they're doing as opposed to, um, Pro Tim saying that, you know, she doesn't particularly care to see the scope, but certainly I want to know.
No, that's not what I said.
Are you eating snacks? No, no.
Okay, that's all, uh, she can respond, that's it.
That's it. Go ahead, um, Ms., um, Lanier and then Lawson.
Um, yeah, I, I would too, would like to see the scope, but I don't think that we need another meeting to see it. I think that if you send the information out to us, that we can individually, individually make comments to it in the essence of time.
Yeah. Uh, we, we can certainly do that. We have, uh, tentatively put together, um, a scope. And so we can send that to the board and then individually you can respond back and then we can provide the final scope of work as it, um, calls for. Because, you know, from staff's standpoints, we are going to incorporate the questions that you all ask from the elected officials because at the end of the day, the decision of the arrangement resides with you all. And I don't want to eliminate or preclude a question unless it's a duplicated question in the scope. So we will send that out to the board. And if you can take the opportunity to read over that and, um, say any comments or questions or addition questions, we can, uh, take that and, and go forward.
All right, Mr. Lawson?
Uh, Mr. Evans, uh, it's timeframe, if we decide to go with PFM, what's going to be our next steps?
Um, if we can get the scope solidified, um, here in the next seven days, uh, I would anticipate that it's a matter of just meeting with their team to, uh, give them the, the scope and then concurrently legal would have to do the conflict check. We anticipate, when we looked at this entire process, that we should be able to have in hand a final report by May fifteenth. That may be sooner, um, as it relates to what's occurring right now. There may be additional capacity in their firm to look at these things, um, a lot quicker and we can see what we can do to expedite the process. But we believe that we can have a final report delivered with an opinion by May fifteen and then ultimately getting that on a council meeting for discussion and ultimately, um, uh, any conversations or considerations that the council would have to take.
It's seven thirty-seven, public comments is now closed. All right, anything else, Mr. Lawson?
Mr. Madam Chair, thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Just one last thing. So, and that's kind of where I was going to ask my follow up. In reading the memo, it says, um, the next step in the process is to retain the financial advisor to assess the developer's financial capability and review their partnership structure, organization and ability to deliver the Phase Two project. And I think that's certainly important, but my concern, and I hope Dr. Voltell is hearing me.
I'm hearing you.
This goes back to the comments that I brought up at the last CRA meeting about what our expectations were when we decided to appoint a member of the city council to the joint team. Certainly, I'm not asking you to go out and do any negotiation or bidding on behalf of the members of the board or even the city, but at least to bring a routine update as to where we are in the process. But my concerns were, were this. And I've literally had to bring a meeting with both Mr. Evans from the CRA and the city with, um, the developer because they were not getting any feedback from where we are in the process. And before we go into financial capabilities, if there is even a scintilla of a thought that this may or may not be a, a, a possibility for either side, I don't want us to get too far into, to going into financial capability for a single-use entity that's just created for this purpose. If, you know, if the deal is dead on arrival, if we don't even have a meeting of the minds. So to assess someone's ability is fine, but I think there has to be a conversation or a sit-down that has to occur because all of this would be fruitless if we get to a point where there's some acquisition issues or there's some concerns that may create a problem that, uh, uh, individual party is not even able to, uh, move forward. So certainly, I, I, I think it's important to do it, but I'm not so concerned that that has to be the priority. I would like to see that there's at least an establishment of where we go from here as, that happens before the financial assessment process.
Madam Chair, if I may, to the, the councilman's point, um, I've been talking to the CRA Director and Economic Development has, has been working, uh, with the CRA Director because we are going to make sure that there is, uh, routine updates that you all can receive with respect to the process and the progress that is being made concerning this particular, um, matter. And whether it's something that the board wishes to see, that at, you know, every, you know, once a month, we provide you a brief staff report on the status as what's going on. We have certainly have no problem doing that and providing you, uh, written reports on the progress and the communications that we're having with the development team. So the board is continued, continually involved and informed on the process.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
And Mr. Evans, if we could maybe increase that to just bi-weekly, written, email notifications?
That's fine.
Just because it's to a point now where, uh, this new council's coming up one year. And with this one-year anniversary, we want to see that this process has been in place before we even got in office. And we want to see that it's actually moving forward. And we want to see that it's actually moving forward. So if we can get it as often as possible so that we can stay on top of it. And as staff, we know you guys are gonna do your part to make sure it brings it to us, but we just want to make sure we're updated.
Absolutely.
Ma'am Chair, go ahead.
Um, I'd just like to thank, uh, Mr. Evans, Jonathan, and you too, Scott Evans, for, um, pushing this forward, but, um, making sure that it's in the best interest of the city. Proactively, professionally putting this forward, um, and the fact that we're not letting the developer drive the process. This is something that the city is engaging in, this is something that the city will be putting money in. This is something that is happening in this city. So therefore, we should be driving the process and not someone else. So I can appreciate the fact, uh, Mr. Jonathan Evans, that you have brought this forward, um, uh, quickly and able to, uh, keep us informed about what is actually happening here. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Ma'am Chair.
Ma'am. Uh, Lawson and then Botel.
Uh, Mr. Scott Evans, have we obtained all of the land necessary in this project?
Um, it would be, excuse me, Scott Evans, CRA Director, it would be ideal if we could, um, acquire the Yachtsman property. Uh, we have, the CRA board did vote to, uh, purchase and we now can, will control, once it closes, the entire block on the south side of Thirteenth Street, uh, which is between Broadway and Avenue C. Uh, so that's a major development opportunity for the city, um, and the CRA to accomplish as a part of the Marina District project. The last piece is the Yachtsman, which is right in the middle of the city's marina. And we are actively negotiating with Viking, uh, to come to terms on acquiring that property also.
And, uh, Councilman, if I can add on that as well, there's, there's been a lot of good discussion that's happened between Mr. Evans and I concerning that property. And hopefully, we will be able to bring that property into our inventory here sooner rather than later. They're, um, willing to concede on some things and, and provide some things, um, as part of the agreement that I think the board would be very pleased once we get to, uh, the numbers. So kudos to, to staff and, and Scott's team to, working this, uh, to a point where hopefully, uh, we can bring you something to consider in the next sixty days or so.
All right, Mr. McCoy?
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I think you forgot me.
Yeah, I get it, I'm sorry, go ahead.
It's all right. Just somewhat tangential, but, uh, I think it would be really important for all of us on council to have the opportunity to read that book that, um, we brought back from the conference. I know Mr. Evans has it, I think I gave Mr. McCoy a copy of it and perhaps Mr. Lawson has it from the session that he went to with Mr. Evans. But it's a great overview of the P three process and I think it would be, hoove us all to be that much, um, educated about it. Second, I think it would be important for us, not necessarily for the Marina project, but for our City Hall complex project going forward. If we had the opportunity to visit Boynton Beach and to see what they did and maybe get some advice from the folks down there. I don't know who they use for their financial advisor, but, um, I know that they're happy with the process as it has unfolded and I think we could learn a lot of lessons from them. So I'm hopeful that Mr. Evans will be, one of the Mr. Evanses will be making arrangements for us to have that visit.
Absolutely, we're working on that. And, um, at this particular moment, the town of, um, Lake Park would like to have a joint meeting with the city council towards the end of April. However, um, the situation concerning COVID nineteen is putting a tentative hold on that joint meeting. We're still holding the date, uh, because we're hopeful that things will improve. But in the event, um, that we don't have that meeting, we'll postpone. But it will talk about some of the things that they're doing to energize their marina and how that, that particular development, Nautilus Two One One, can create synergy on the Broadway corridor. And they want to talk about uniformity and consistency as far as land development regulations and how we can work together to create a sense of place on that corridor. So, uh, that's tentatively scheduled, uh, but we're still monitoring it and, and hopefully being able to bring that to, uh, some discussion with the boards in April, end of April.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. McCoy?
Mr. Manager, um, Mr. Evans, either one of Mr. Evans, they can answer this question or even Ms. Nguyen. So I'm back at this financial capability and something Commissioner, Councilwoman Lanier said about we're using our money. Are we tentatively coming to the table to acquire some property or have some skin in the game as far as acquisition? Have we developed, like, what's our, I guess, input as far as this deal is concerned? And I have a follow-up.
I, I think the, the monies that we would bring to the table would be the assets, um, by the acquisition of the property, Councilman. So to your point, we would like to assemble the parcels necessary to be able to bring the set of parcels that the developer can move forward and that would be our contrib- contribution in the arrangement.
Thank you. So, uh, you know, and, and I want to kind of be clear. It's not so much that the developers are running this process. It should be a development agreement that it requires all parties because clearly what we have here is we need the developer just as much as the developers needs us. And it's not that we're shelling out all of the money because if that was the case, then we wouldn't need them. But in light of that, speaking to the financial capability, I, I'm, I, I really want to see if we focus on making sure that we have a common ground and understand what has to happen first. I think that's priority because the other thing that came to mind, and I was just here researching some statutes, is I don't understand how it's to work if we're gonna ask a developer to come in and present financial information to an advisor, which generally that information is what you probably can consider, um, proprietary or something of that sort when it comes to certain commitments and they're probably exempt. So, I, you know, I, I think there has to be more conversation as opposed to saying we're gonna look at somebody's financials. We're gonna look at their financials and then do what? What, what exactly is gonna happen? Because that seems like that's kind of, first of all, I know trade secrets are protected under one nineteen, so I need to know exactly what's the plan.
Uh, Councilman, to your point, you're, you're absolutely right. And that's why the financial advisor would look at the information and documentation and provide a report based on his or hers expertise and provide for an analysis that shows that they have the capabilities and the financial wherewithal. I don't think they're going to bring you the book with everything that they have because some of that information is proprietary information, that there is trade secrets, that it can adversely impact their ability to compete in certain markets. That's why, but they can have that conversations with the financial advisor and the financial advisor will then be the conduit that brings information to the board for consideration. If it is a situation whereby Mr. Evans and I enter into that conversation and review, then of course, some of that information is subject to public records, but there is exemptions for certain things and that advisor would know that. And that's why it's important to have that particular, um, expert on board. Ms. Nguyen, I don't know if you wanted to add on to that comment?
No, I think you covered it, thank you.
Ma'am Chair.
Yes.
And also to, um, Councilman McCoy's point, this is a partnership that we're looking to do because we want to move this forward. Our number one word at the conference, the P three conference, was risk. We want to mitigate risk for the city and for the developers and make sure it makes sense for everybody. So essentially, what we're looking for is this scope, if you can bring that back as soon as possible, so we can make sure we're in agreement as a council that the scope is gonna make sense for what we're looking for. Because we have to actually know what we're looking for in regards to this financial report. And also making sure that we're open-minded to the type of financing and the creative financing that comes along with it. Because when this conference, um, we went to, it discussed how creative the city has to be with the developers, how we have to work together to make it make sense for them putting their money on the line, for us putting our assets on the line to get these projects' development, to make sure that they can recoup their money. So the financials is not just saying, hey, these developers have a bag of money to just throw at a project to take all the risk on from the city. We have to be open-minded to what they're bringing to the table to make sure it's gonna be profitable for both sides, to get a development done and also to make sure the city is protected. Our number one and only priority is the protection of the city. But at the same time, we're not gonna track these national developers on any project that we do without actually being open-minded to the development process that goes in place, creative financing to develop in means of a P three project that the city can work with. So we'll just wait for that scope to come back and then we'll go from there.
And, and Councilman, you're absolutely right and to Councilman McCoy's point, through information that we've heard through the community is that folks have to also understand through this arrangement that there is availability fees that are paid back to the city. There is tax revenue that's associated with these arrangements. So we may assemble the parcel and say move forward with the development of this parcel, but they may see an availability fee that's paid back to the city. In some cases, millions of dollars annually and plus the tax revenue that you get. So there's a lot of ways that the city can benefit from this type of an arrangement, but that's why it's important to go through this process and then educate the public as to what the arrangement will look at and what's the tangible benefit that the city can receive. And risk mitigation, that's the big thing. We don't want to put the city in a situation that we can, you know, look back and not be proud of the decisions we made. So there's a lot of intricate parts that we still want to bring forward and we think that moving forward with the, uh, firm that we already have, uh, on a retainer would be the most, uh, expedient way to deliver on what the board's, uh, questions and concerns are. And we can send you out that scope. We just need some action from the board to, uh, direct staff by virtue of a motion to enter into a arrangement with our, uh, consultants. However, prior to moving in that direction, we would, you know, provide you the scope for, uh, feedback.
Ma'am Chair.
Thank you. Well done, Dr. Botel.
And as just a follow-up, um, to what, um, our city manager said, a conversation that we've had is I would also want, um, my colleagues to be open-minded to obtaining as many parcels as possible as a city side so that we can start putting together these larger parcels and start developing our city and utilizing the city and our, uh, developers to actually build and to grow. So, um, I believe Councilwoman Botel had a comment, but I just want to go ahead and make the motion so we can move forward.
I was gonna make the motion, so you can go ahead and I'll second it.
I want to make the motion that we move forward with our PF-
M.
PFM, uh, organization to begin, uh, the process of reviewing financials for our Marina Phase Two project.
All right.
Second.
All right. Any other questions or comments? Madam Clerk?
Councilperson Lanier?
Yes.
Councilperson McCoy?
Yes.
Councilperson Lawson?
Yes.
Pro Tim Botel?
Yes.
Chair Mill Anderson?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
Item number twenty-one.
A resolution of the City Council of the City Riviera Beach, Palm Beach County, Florida, declaring a state of local emergency for COVID nineteen, waiving the procedures and formalities otherwise required by ordinance pertaining to expenditure, empowering the city manager to e- exercise all powers and duties to provide for the health and safety of persons and property, including but not limited to the establishment of a curfew effective March eighteenth, twenty twenty, and provide an effective date. Madam Chair, we do not have any public comment cards on this item, the acceptance of public comment cards on this item is now closed.
All right.
No moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, Mr. Evans?
Madam Chair, members of the city council, this item is before you to seek authorization to move forward with an emergency declaration stating a local state of emergency. This is consistent with what our other municipal partners are doing. We have had some executive orders from the governor concerning COVID nineteen and the executive orders have been coming out very rapidly to be able to combat this pandemic. They have provided us guidance with respect to social distancing, looking at closing certain facilities, making sure people are utilizing good hygiene. And so this particular item gives the city manager and the executive management team and the incident command structure, because we are in partial activation of our EOC, the latitude and flexibility to take some steps to protect the health, safety, and welfare of our public. If this declaration is passed, we have some information that we will be communicating to the public that will talk about some of the facilities that we will look to close. Certain facilities will remain open. We will utilize a lot of communication tools, whether it's teleconferencing, answering emails, FaceTime, go-to-meeting, to still continue to provide services. We're also looking at options for telecommuting and continuity of government, making sure that executive management is working at separate facilities and to ensure that we can continue to provide services through this particular situation. We have been informed that the school district is going to continue to suspend classes through April fifteenth. And so we know we have situations where our young people, uh, some of them were only receiving a nutrit- nutritionally balanced meal by the school districts. Chief Osgood and his team have done an exceptional job working with partners at Chick-fil-A to deliver food to students that we see at parks and going to visit some folks. So we are looking to increase that effort to make sure that our community is taken care of. Some of the things that we may need to look at as this continues to move forward is how do we provide some technology assistance to our residents and some of our young people? If they do not have the appropriate tools in place, we are also making sure that we separate, uh, the workforce and having some work remote and having some work in city facilities. This is an ever-evolving and moving target and we are trying to do our absolute best to ensure that the public is informed as well as you as the elected officials. By passing this resolution, it gives the city manager the latitude and flexibility to, uh, extend the declaration after seven days. Um, if there is not an extension after seven days, it will continue on. We are working on some of the policies that, uh, Ms. Dickerson has communicated as we have found out that there is certain policies in our agency that are not in place as it relates to a pandemic. So those policies are all under review. Uh, we're making sure that our information systems are secure and how we're gonna provide service to our residents. Law enforcement, public safety, utility district will still remain operational as well as building and inspections. The way in which we conduct business will change. However, those core services will still remain operational. Some of, some of our recreation facilities will see some closures. Our special events and permits for special events, we are not gonna be issuing any permits for special events, whether they're city-sponsored or cosponsored events, for at least a period of thirty days under the guidance and direction from the governor's office as well as the White House. So staff is recommending approval of the resolution that is before you and staff is prepared to answer any questions that you may have.
All right. Do we have any questions or comments?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Mr. Evans, um, I, I want to understand the option of implementing a, a curfew that's gonna be, um, decided by you. What's the thinking there? Because I so happened to see Sheriff Bradshaw yesterday on the news that said that we aren't even at that place to even consider a curfew. I want to know why, why is that, um, something that you want to have in this resolution?
You're absolutely correct, Councilman, and I will defer to our legal advisor to provide a little bit of direction concerning that.
Yes, good evening.
Good evening.
Um, Councilperson McCoy, I added that language because if I don't add it and we need a curfew and we don't have the ability to come back before you to request one, this gives us the ability to do it in the event that we need it. This doesn't establish a curfew right now, but it gives us the ability to do so if we need it.
Okay, um, that's it?
All right, anyone else? Mr. Lawson?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, Mr. Evans, the, uh, I know you had mentioned the internet. Off-topic, but I would really like if we started to look into citywide internet for situations like this, to have the ability, if this is unprecedented, but if we had citywide internet for these kids that are gonna be out of school to have access and maybe looking into that process of that citywide broadband. I know we looked at a few other, um, municipalities when we did a few of these conferences that had that option and that has the ability for that, but possibly bringing that before us.
Uh, absolutely, Councilman, we can, uh, certainly do that. And I believe there is some funding that we may see, um, from the feds after we get over here to talk about the digital divide. And so there may be some additional monies that, uh, may assist in facilitating that. But we'll reach out to our partners at Comcast and see what we can do to, um, provide, uh, coverage throughout our city.
And I also wanted to just, uh, congratulate Chief Osgood and his department, uh, the Community Police Department because they've been doing a phenomenal job the last couple of days. Uh, riding around with them today and, um, I saw that just the interaction with them and the kids. It was really something that we need to continue to build upon. So, uh, kudos to, uh, Chief Osgood, welcome and thanks for jumping right in.
Mr. McCoy?
Yes, Ma'am Chair. Um, Councilman Lawson, I actually reviewed this article just today where Comcast has opened up, Comcast has opened all of the Xfinity Wi-Fi networks nationally, um, in light of COVID nineteen. So, um, certainly if anyone is in an area where wireless access or a neighbor has a modem without going onto your neighbor's network, you have access to access the internet. You have access to the internet. So, um, yeah, I, yeah, access to access. So I, I did see that happen today. Um, I just would imagine that there are some, well, most of the people here are Comcast subscribers. So I think that probably won't be as a challenge as compared to maybe eight years ago when they were first rolling out. And I understand that they have some, similar to cell towers, they have- And I understand that they have some, similar to cell towers, they have some local area hotspots. So if you're just in a relative community, then you can actually access the internet off of one of their cell towers, so.
What I noticed at one of the conferences is that we can actually implement a citywide internet. And it was for our square miles, it was less than a million dollars for free internet for the entire city. So right now it is beneficial because we're in a crisis that they're opening up these towers. But once this is averted, Comcast is going right back to, you know, charging for their service. So if we can provide that service as a city, that'd be something that we want to look into for the near future. So that can be a continuation moving forward.
And Madam Chair, if I may to that point, when I was the manager in Haynes City, we had a conversation with Bright House and they provided internet service at all our public parks because they knew that people were coming to visit those public parks and that if they weren't in the community, they didn't have a Bright House account. They'll pay the $2 or $3 an hour. So I think us having the beachfront that we do have, Peanut Island, the Marina, all those different areas, there may be a likelihood of them looking at recreational facilities to say, we already have a strong customer base, but we know we get a lot of visitors to this area. So it may be advantageous for them to look to drop some of those wireless units throughout our community. And all we had to pay for was the electric, which was nominal. So we can have that conversation with Comcast and look about the feasibility of at least starting at some of those major hubs where we know people congregate.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
And just one more follow up, I'm just kind of looking through the memo and the order. I actually just have some concern with the curfew because I know that with that discussion with establishing a curfew, I think that colleagues, we may be interested in just calling a special meeting if necessary to implement a curfew for the sake of, every resident will be calling us on a daily basis the minute we start talking about a curfew here in the city. And that could truly affect the operations of our small businesses, of our businesses throughout the county, throughout the city, and then all of our residents. So being that, go ahead.
Madam Chair, what I can do is before that gets to that point, I will not issue a curfew unless it's, there's a meeting to discuss that particular item exclusively. So it can remain in the resolution, but with the city attorney sitting here, we will not institute a curfew without coming back before the board to speak specifically to that item.
I can agree with that, Madam Chair, as long as it comes before the board. We don't need to amend or update the resolution.
And in the past, I think we've had curfew, but it was basically come from the top. And I would imagine we would do the same thing. We wouldn't just randomly do a curfew unless it's being recommended from a higher up.
It would have to be uniform from the county, countywide, to institute a curfew because from a law enforcement perspective, you know, people don't know jurisdictions and it just becomes a policing issue. So it would have to, the county would have to lead and then we would bring something before this council for following the recommendations that the Board of County Commissioners will execute.
All right, okay. Anyone else? All right, Madam Clerk?
Councilperson Lanier?
Yes.
Councilperson McCoy?
Yes.
Councilperson Lawson?
Yes.
Pro Tim Botel?
Yes.
Chair Miller Anderson?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
All right, discussion by city manager?
Madam Chair and members of the City Council, obviously with this pandemic, we're looking at alternative means to be able to conduct our meetings. We have explored some digital means that can probably be able to accommodate remote meetings. However, there's still some testing that we need to do on the city side. The city attorney has provided a letter to the governor to ask for direction as well as some other city attorneys. And we're awaiting some response from the governor as to how to proceed. Some other local municipalities, after they have declared their state of emergency, they have found that the statute does provide us the necessary steps to protect health, safety, and welfare of the public. And so they've utilized that mechanism to move to digital meetings. So the question I have from the board is that would you like for us to continue to explore digital meetings? And would you like to see if we cannot move in that particular fashion for our next meeting being digital, that we have a situation where we go back to what the charter prescribes and that's one meeting per month? So staff is looking from direction from the board. We believe that we can accomplish the digital meetings and to allow for a element that the community can participate. But there's still a lot of research that we need to do on our end to make sure that that can occur with good certainty.
Madam Chair.
We'll have Ms. Lanier and then Dr. Botel.
I say to pursue the option of digital meetings. I'm afraid that the way this pandemic is going, we may be, we may be quarantined or we may be have curfews. We don't know what this, you know, what the future holds, but I would say to definitely pursue it so that that can be an option for us.
All right, Dr. Botel?
Well, as the oldest and therefore the most at risk member of this council, I would highly recommend that we go to digital meetings and also pursue, you know, anything that we can do to keep ourselves safe. And I wouldn't mind just meeting once a month. I think it makes sense, we can do a lot of things. Yeah, that's my statement.
The, if we do the digital, we're still talking about doing two, our regular meetings two a month.
That is correct.
But once a month would be if we can't work out the digital stuff.
That is correct, Madam Chair.
I'm fine with that.
Okay.
Once a month, that meeting would be 12 hours.
That's all right.
Doesn't have to be.
That's what y'all always say.
No, well, look at what time is it right now. We said, at least, Mr. Evans, we had a conversation with, this meeting's supposed to have been 30 minutes. What happened to that?
He lost a bit.
I lost a bit.
Well, you know, if we didn't get Ms. Dr. Osayami's military background.
That was two minutes, thank you very much, I knew what you were going to say.
We didn't get his military background, we probably would have been much further ahead.
Two minutes.
But, you know, I certainly support that and I don't know if this is possible and I'm just kind of brainstorming here. I know we have community facilities throughout, one on the north end, one on the south end. We have the event center, we have the ambassador center. If at all possible, if we were to go to some sort of telecommunication or video, you know, I certainly don't want to infringe on public's access, but if we had a way to utilize those facilities and do a live feed and be able to real time have people participate relatively in their communities without having to come into a such contained environment like the chambers and be able to conduct and facilitate a meeting, I think that's certainly worth exploring. Nobody, I don't believe nobody kind of expected that we'll be in this situation where we are a month ago. So I think we have to kind of figure out what works best. But, you know, as I said to someone today, you know, the City of Riviera Beach, at least three departments that I can think of off the top of my head runs 24/7, that's police, fire, and our utilities department. And we still have to do business. So, you know, I would rather not be here at a meeting for once a month because that's going to be pretty much a strain, you know. If we do that, then we would have to kind of consider not making it at 6 o'clock and perhaps making it earlier in the afternoon, maybe at 3 o'clock, especially since our chair, you know, she's off on an extended vacation.
I have the report to work tomorrow, thank you very much.
So she certainly can make the meeting and I know Councilwoman Lanier has a little bit of free time too. So, you know, whatever we decide, you know, I certainly support it. So, but certainly let's kind of be open minded and thinking about the options that's available to us. But I certainly don't want to infringe on anyone's ability to come to the meeting. And that's all I have for in response to that.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Have a question. To what extent can we limit remarks from the public? Can we shorten the length or can we have them only address items on the agenda? Because I think many times our meetings go so late because we have so much personal, we have so much public comment.
Personal, you're right.
What's our ability to limit that?
The, Madam Chair, if I may, yes and yes. Yes, you can, the citizen comment section of your meeting is not something that is required by statute. The statute requires you to allow for public comment before the board takes action on any item that's on the agenda. So you can, and you can restrict and reduce the time in which people are allowed to speak. Some agencies just have a situation where you only have the opportunity to speak on agenda items and there's no citizen comments. Some agencies have citizen comments on one meeting a month and don't have it on the next meeting. So there's multiple ways to be able to address the situation. But there is an item that we have postponed for further discussion as to how the agenda process and the meetings and all that is looked at. So we can certainly look at that because I think if we go to a remote platform or a call in situation, you will get inundated with folks that will call in to be able to provide their comments. So it may continue to make your meetings a little bit longer. But there's some ways that we can work to provide some options that can allow for the meetings to go a little bit smoother, whether it's emailing your comments, calling your comments, staff will scribe it and read the comments for the record, et cetera. So we're talking about all those opportunities on the administrative level to be able to provide some options for the board.
Good.
All right, anyone else? All right, is that it, Mr. City Manager?
Yes, yes, Madam Chair.
All right, discussion by city attorney?
Yes, just two short things, just to update you and the public. The Florida Supreme Court issued an administrative order canceling all jury duty, all trials, all nonessential matters. Basically, all the Judge Marks here, the chief judge here, decided that she wants to hold our bond hearings first appearance and domestic violence matters. Also, I'm happy to report that I was able to hire a labor attorney. Ms. Denise Matumba started with the city last Monday and she's working out very well thus far and we're very happy to have her. I would have had her here to introduce her, however, because of the situation, we decided not to. So you'll meet her at a later date. Thank you.
All right. City Council Committee reports. Statements by the mayor and city councils. We'll start with the mayor.
Yes, first I just want to give kudos to Mr. Evans and his team for the wonderful work you guys are doing on keeping the public aware of what's going on and also the body of elected officials. If you are a senior, tomorrow we are going to be giving away grocery bags of food. You can reach us at 268-3396 or 268-8867. I'm also working with the Food Bank and Feeding South Florida to make sure that we continue to get our seniors food that can't, because we're recommending that they stay in the house. So we want to make sure that we're taking care of those seniors also. And we are in, we're trying to get, but we're vetting some people because I met with some seniors and right now some of them have a tough time getting out, getting their medicine. So we are also putting together a team that we can go and get their medicine from pharmacy stores for them. So the two numbers that I gave, you can reach us at those numbers. Tomorrow we'll be giving out food bags, so call us, we're here to serve you, thank you.
What is what? Pull your mic down, can't hear you, pull your microphone.
Oh, sorry, he's going to be giving them out where, here?
No, 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 we're going to take them to them.
Oh, okay, I see.
Yeah, we'll take the bags of food.
All right, that's it, Mr. Lawson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Chief Osgood, I was going to see, if you're going to continue the process of feeding some of the kids in the community and going around with that, if we could utilize some of the local small business vendors to provide the food. I know we've been using Chick-fil-A as a partner, but there's a lot of different small restaurants that do lunch specials that we could possibly utilize at a similar comparable cost to possibly feed them for, if you continue to that same process of helping out the kids. I know they're going to be on spring break next week, so maybe Thursday or Friday, if we could utilize one of the small vendors, a few restaurants locally that we could possibly reach over to and that will provide lunches for the kids as well.
Yes, Nate Osgood, your police chief, yes, we're looking into other vendors to look at to help us to provide for the community, for the kids while they're out of school. So I guess next week sometime, I spoke to one of the majors to facilitate this request already and I told him not to keep going to the same restaurants, take a look around and find out. First of all, go out to the community and find out what the kids want and give a different variety of food flavor for them. They don't always want to eat Chick-fil-A, they may have something else they want to have. And that's a good idea, sir, we're going to look into that tomorrow and I'll give you an answer on it.
I can send out a few vendors from restaurants in the city. It's just as a small business owner, I just know that the struggle that they're experiencing now with this time and they're not going to have the same influx of people coming into the restaurant. So if we can kind of patronize them and provide that service and feed the kids with good food from the different small restaurants, I think that'd help both sides.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, chief. Madam Chair, also wanted to announce that on Tuesday, March 24th, I'm going to be hosting a Facebook Live show. It's going to be an emergency panel discussion. I'm going to have guest speaker Senator Bobby Powell speaking about legislative updates, Attorney Edwin Ferguson to talk about some illegal updates with landlord and tenant issues. Jeanette Marshall from Healthier Neighbors is going to be talking about the mini grant that she's offering. Tiny Davis Johnson will be talking about the bridge loan and the SBA loan. And a few medical professionals will be on there to talk about the COVID-19. Also, our city manager will be giving a city update and I'm going to ask if our police chief can come as well just from the legal department to give an update. It's going to be right here at the chambers. We're going to have about seven to 10 people that are going to be panel, do a panel discussion. We'll have it on Facebook Live, we'll have it on Channel 18, and we'll also have it on Riviera Beach YouTube. Thank you, Madam Chair.
All right, Mr. McCoy?
So, Councilman Lawson?
Sir.
I guess I didn't understand, so who's providing this food? You said, so you gave the chief the idea to look at other restaurants. Where's this, where does the money come from to support this?
Oh, well, this week, the police department has been feeding some of the kids. They've been driving to different complexes and areas. So I believe it's coming out of their budget or whatever emergency budget they have for feeding kids that have to defer over to the chief to see where he's been using that money to come from.
We have a few different budgets we take a look at that we have small items that we can use for the community. So as long as we don't go over a certain amount, so we just have small budgets that we can put back into the community. So it's not a specific area. I asked them to go ahead and put it on the card and we'll take a look and see which budget we can pull from.
Okay, so like how long do we plan on, I mean, help me understand because I only knew about this today. So like, what's the plan? Is this something that we're looking to do for the next couple of weeks, the next month?
I can answer that for you, sir. We decided we can go for two more weeks with this to keep it because we have budget and aligned items that we can take a look at. And if we can't meet that, I already spoke to Mr. Evans and see if we can meet some of the budget over there to find out to help meet the requirements, to help facilitate the need to feed the kids. We also spoke to the Boys and Girls Club and to the schools, so it's not all coming from our budget. We're also looking at the schools, I think the Sun Coast and one of the local schools. I'm sorry?
Lincoln Elementary.
Lincoln Elementary and the Boys and Girls Club to also to send them over or they can call us and we'll pick up the food items to bring to the schools and the communities, from the schools to the communities.
And as a follow, and as a follow up, Councilman McCoy, I also was able to provide the drinks for the students as well. So I rode around with the, some of the officers and used my budget to allow for the Capri Suns and drinks to give out to some of the kids. So it's an option that we as well can support and help if it's something that we want to put towards it.
And if I may, Madam Chair, we're also trying to, the immediate response that we took was we didn't know if the schools would let us leave with meals to go deliver. So in the particular situation, we went out and got resources because we knew there was going to be a gap there. And so that's why we went to some partner agencies and those types of things. Now, obviously, there is a time where this cannot continuously be sustained. And so we're looking at what are some long-term needs. But we just wanted to be able to fill the gap at least for the interim as we know that some of the only meals that some of our kids may get is during lunchtime at school. So we have an intermediate plan, but we're also looking at how it's long-term and how we as a city maybe transition out and other services complement or augment what we were trying to do.
Mr. McCoy?
If he's on this subject, if you're on the subject, Mary.
Madam Chair? Chief Osgood?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Maybe I can help out with some of the businesses that's in our city to see if some of the days they were front. So I got a list of businesses that I'm working with and I'll see what, are they able to sponsor some of these lunches for our kids also?
Yeah, that would be very helpful because we kind of run out of ideas, but we would love to have more ideas to find out who can help facilitate, to help out the community. And I'm sure we have a lot of business owners who would probably be willing to help out.
So I'll start working on that tomorrow for you.
Thank you, sir.
So, go ahead. On the same topic as well, Mr. Evans, is it possible for us to follow up with the school board or the, what is it? The, the school board again to just see if we can utilize some of the food that they have? Because they're literally throwing out all the food at the end of the day. So after their session at 1 o'clock, they're just throwing everything out. So the same food that we're going, spending money on, we could possibly utilize that to take to different. So the same food that we're going, spending money on, we could possibly utilize that to take to the different uh students that can't get to the schools or don't have transportation to get there.
Absolutely. We'll make a, a call to the district office and see if there's an ability to uh provide us those meals so they're not being discarded.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I- is there one area you, you guys are feeding or you just?
No, 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 sir. We go on citywide. Um, today we use, yesterday was Monroe Heights and the community's back here. Today it was um, I got a list of them, matter of fact.
You're, you're, you're good.
I'm gonna give you all the lists.
But it's citywide?
No, but we do it citywide. We're not leaving any area out.
Okay.
We hit um, um Marsh Harbor today, Solona Bay, Villa Rosa, and Thousand Oaks today. That's the areas that we came to deliver food in today. And different from what we did yesterday. So tomorrow we'll probably hit, repeat, go back around and just drive around. And the, and the guys have been really doing a good job. I wish I could take credit for them. They're really enthused about going out to, to meet the kids. They see kids walking on the streets and I rode out with them. They say, hey, would you like a meal? They say, sure.
Well, I think it's good too because it's helping keep the kids, the police and our children in relationship. So they're asked for the patrol in the city.
They're not being stopped and asked for their names, just being stopped and saying hello to and giving a chicken sandwich. And they appreciate that.
Good.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
And one of the things I did observe is a few of the officers, they already knew the kids, like kids were running up to them, giving them hugs. So it was really, it was empowering. Uh, they, 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 they didn't, they didn't observe the um social distancing, but they, they definitely were engaging with the kids and it was beautiful to see. So continuing that process and however we can do it as long as we can fiscally, um, financially handle it.
Yes, I will. Thank you.
So, Ms. Chief Osgood, are you, so a- actually I spoke to school board member Robinson over the weekend about the food distribution and she did give me some information. Do we have police officers that are there during that time when they do the distribution in the parent pickup lots for Sun Coast and at Lincoln? Do you know of?
I do not know that answer, sir.
We do? Okay, because that's what I was concerned with. I didn't have any idea of what this turnout was gonna be. But certainly, um, one of the things, and I certainly appreciate what you're doing, but one of the things Dr. Robinson mentioned was that her idea was that we have a lot of school food service employees that's not gonna be working and also transportation personnel that's not gonna be working. And that was the district's way of keeping them employed by helping distribute throughout the summer. So I think, you know, certainly, not, I'm sorry, it's not the summer, throughout this pandemic crisis where there's no schools. So I think that was definitely good on the district's part in making sure that we employ people as well as serving in the community. And then ironically, it came down from the state that these meals were gonna continue. I think it's actually Department of Agriculture that is um making sure that these items still get distributed to these communities. I was gonna ask about transportation, but Mr. Evans certainly, you know, if it comes to the point, let's kind of explore the idea. If we have to kind of do some sort of transport or something like that, I certainly want to keep those options open to us. We're not, and I don't know if we're doing anything currently. Is Youth Empowerment doing anything?
Uh, at this particular moment, no, their numbers have dwindled down to where they're seeing about five to seven um kids that are dropping in.
So they're not, I mean, currently, like, because I know they were doing GD programming, all of that suspended, correct?
Uh, they're, they're not, right now they don't have the uh, the students that are coming in there. Some of them are coming in for some testing and those types of things, but their numbers was up, you know, over 20. Now there's only five to seven and they're dropping in. So I don't think as far as curriculum-based, school-related, we're seeing that, that spike. There may be a few that are in there, but not at the frequency that we've had in the past.
Okay, well, that, I definitely wanted to know about the um policing at the schools in the event that, you know, we needed, you know, additional city staff. Because I don't know, is the school district police involved in this?
I'm sure they're there.
Oh, they're, they're as well? Okay, good. Um, so that's all I have for that. And certainly I want to know when you guys go out and distribute so uh, you know, we can kind of be a part of that as well. Mr. Evans, our HR director, Ms. Dickerson, mentioned that we were waiving the wait periods for health insurance for, I guess that's new employees?
For new employees, yes, sir.
What is, I guess what was typically the wait period? Was it 90 days?
60 days.
So they're, they start and they go?
Yeah, but as soon as they start, they will become, they will be eligible to receive their insurance benefit.
And is that because we covered the cost or is that a insurance carrier?
Well, that is because, well, one, we cover this cost for individuals and that we have the ability to make modifications with regards to the start time. And the rationale behind that is we had a lot of employees that expressed some concerns, especially the new ones that were coming on board and the ones that we're looking to recruit that are postponing their time to come to the agency because of not having the health insurance for 60 days, et cetera. Um, and the cost associated with COBRA is so expensive. So in, in spite of just continuing to maintain that policy during this pandemic time, we're going to allow for their insurance to start immediately. Once things get back to normal, then we will go back to our standard policy where there's a 60-day wait.
Okay, I think that was a great idea. Um, because certainly, you know, you would be petrified if you started this city and all of this is going on around you and you have no health insurance coverage. Also, it al- almost begs the question if we can explore the idea to seeing if the insurance carrier um will allow us to open up um, uh, not, not an open enrollment, but to kind of make some modifications for individuals that may want to contribute more or less to their flex spending accounts or to the HSAs or something like that. Because I do, I did, I think I sent you one of the emails that came through from Edna that first indicated that any kind of visits associated with um the coronavirus would be waived. But I don't know if that's true when it comes to prescriptions or medications or other out-of-pocket. And members, I just want to remind you that, you know, we have high deductible plans. And I don't know if members or even employees uh who participate in this plan anticipated something of this sort. And especially when you're dealing with um possibly a family size of maybe five or six. So if there's an option to explore, um, making sure that, you know, we can give as many resources to our employees to keep them, you know, assured that, you know, there's a safety net there and also to have some um abilities to um use funds if they need it for medical treatment ahead of time, if that's possible. And I know, I'm sorry, Mr. Sherman, this might create, you know, a, a little bit of a financing nightmare, but I, I certainly want to see if we can give them whatever resources that we have at our disposal.
And, and Councilman, we'll provide a, a response back to you concerning that. Because I think there is some leniency that the insurance company has provided associated with treatments for uh COVID-19. So I'll send that out to you and if, if there's some things that are missing, we'll see as to what we can do to provide um any opportunities for uh coverage for the employer or support for the employees.
All right, that's it. Mr. McCoy?
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Ms. Lanier?
I'd just like to thank the uh staff, uh, Mr. Evans, your office, um, the residents. Um, I know that it's, it's difficult for them not to be out tonight. Um, but we're hoping that we can move forward uh in having uh that peace uh with our meetings. I know that, you know, having the public to speak uh lengthens our meeting, but I mean, it's very exciting when they come. So I would like to, I mean, I, maybe we can limit the time, but I think it's just so entertaining that, you know, we just gotta keep that part uh um on our agenda. But we, maybe we can just kind of limit the time. Um, but also I'd just like to thank the um, the staff of, of the city of Riviera Beach, uh, Mr. Evans, your office, and all the hard work that you guys are putting in. And I know that it is going to not get better. So uh we're hoping and praying that things uh move forward and move along um so that this, the residents in this city can be as safe as possible. Thank you.
All right then, I just, I hope that you all will sit and wait before I finish and not pack up on me. Go ahead, Dr. Otell. I guess that was your cue to say, yeah, you know, I was gonna do my exit speech.
I, you get ready to make your exit speech, I know. It saves less. Um, I also want to thank uh city manager Evans and uh staff for a job well done and especially for the level of communication. That always makes it so much easier for people when at least they are being communicated with. I especially want to thank Walter this evening because it seems like um you all are hearing me, which is great for a change. Um, I got my census envelope in the mail today and I wanted to encourage people to fill out the census when they get their envelope. It looks like a pretty easy process. It gives you a, a census ID that you use when you go on. You can use your iPhone, your, your mobile phone, I think, to do it as long as you can access the internet. Um, and uh so I, I hope everybody completes the census because it makes a big difference to us in terms of the amount of money we get from the government to meet the needs of our citizens here in Riviera Beach. Uh, just so you know, I did put in a, a Flor- a National League of Cities Census Grant for about $33,000. If we get that, we'll be able to employ people who live in the city to go uh help people with completing that form. So I'm hopeful that we'll get that and that's all I have.
And Madam Chair, if I may, the city of Riviera Beach's response rate, um, the last census was 52.2%. So we certainly need to work on getting that number up because it has a profound impact on federal dollars.
Madam Chair, may I also add, if I might, it was striking to me that the response rate in Singer Island was greatly lower than that. So what, we have a task also to convince people who are here only for the season that when they, when they fill out the census, they're supposed to do it where they are at that point in time, which in many cases will be on Singer Island.
All right. All right, and I just want to echo what everyone else has said. Um, really appreciate the hard work that your, you and your staff have done during this time. Um, I know a few other elected officials, they basically are having to do a whole lot of heavy lifting um because of either not having as a, as competent city manager as um we are privileged to have. Um, so I want to thank Mr. Evans as well as his team because I know you all have been trying to make sure that everyone understands what's going on and keep everyone abreast of all of the information. Um, I just had a question about the project on Blue Hair and the storage, the storage one, um, the old Solatron site. Do we have any update on that?
Uh, that particular site, staff has secured a environmental specialist to look at the conditions of that site and working on the report. Um, so as soon as we get that information, then we'll bring it back before the council, but they're still doing their research and analysis.
Okay, all right. And I know we had an email that came, I believe, on Monday about the funds that we will receive, we'll probably get for the projects, the four projects. The uh Riviera Beach Early Learning to kindergarten, $150,000, the Riviera Beach YEP, um, $150,000, and the Riviera Beach Utility District Intercoastal Water Main Replacement, $200,000, and the Firefighter Cancel Reduction Plan, $250,000. That was um some good news that I thought we could share. That was, a lot of those were the things that we discussed when we went up during Palmage County Day. So it was there, that, I guess they heard us. Um, I know there are some cities that put in for things, but we were very fortunate to have four of our projects heard and, and followed through on. So we appreciate all of the hard work that went into this. Um, I think Mr. Pittman has done a excellent job in his relationship up there, probably helped out a lot as well. And Mr. Evans and as well as the team when we went in to speak with the different legislators. So um, that was some good information. And um, you know, I just want to tell everybody to be safe out there. I know we've talked a lot about COVID. But, you know, unfortunately, because of the slow testing of everyone and the criteria that's um so stringent that you can't get a test, you really don't know who has it and who does not have it. People that are not coughing could have it. Um, people who look well could have it. So, uh, but I do want everybody to know, remember, two meetings ago, I was not here and there was a reason why I wasn't here because I was sick. So I did quarantine myself in the house for about 10 days. I was out of work for a very long time. So if I did, it's day 17, so I would hope I'm outside of that, so everyone should be safe. Um, I wanted to provide some comfort to everyone that I come in contact with, but I couldn't get a test. So please don't worry. We should be all okay. If not, I look good, right? So you all will probably be fine. You all should be okay. But no, so, all jokes aside, everybody, please wash your hands, do what you need to do, stay, do social distancing and stay out of meetings so that we could um make sure that everyone stays safe. With that, we stand adjourned.